You ready?
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. We are going to start the City Council regular meeting for October 6, 2025. We'll get that started. Invocation, the invocation will be given by Stephen Ballantyne, Assistant Pastor at the Mount Design Restoration Branch. So please stand. And once the invocation is done, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Ballantyne? There's no Mr. Ballantyne. Would someone from the audience like to step up and give the invocation? Please come forward. Thank you.
Let us pray. Father God, we just thank you for this evening and the time that we can get together and hear about the plans and excitement that's going to happen for our city. We just ask you to bless these councilmen and our mayor and the other staff to give them wisdom and guide them, direct them in their way. Thank you for everything you do for us, Father. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Fears.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember McCandless.
Here.
Councilmember Wiley.
Here.
Councilmember Vought.
Here.
Mayor Rowland.
Here. Next, we have a presentation by Mr. Doug Cowan for the 2025 Legislative Advocate of the Year. Mr. Cowan, the floor is yours. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor, members of the City Council, Doug Cowan, President and CEO of Community Services League. It is a pleasure to be here with you tonight. We have a very brief presentation, but one that is really exciting for us to present in front of this group of people. We'd also like to thank city staff, our fellow citizens, for being here to hear a brief presentation about a departing staff member who has done an incredible job of partnering with organizations like CSL to strengthen our community, especially as it pertains to the health and well-being of low-income and vulnerable people. Joined tonight is our Board Chair, Catnatician Jeff Benson, our past Board Chair, and several other Board Members. This is a recognition bestowed on by a vote of our entire Board of Directors. And to make the presentation, I will introduce Mr. Zach Harmon-McLaughlin, the Chair of our CSL Board of Directors Advocacy Committee.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. On behalf of the CSL Board of Directors, our staff, volunteers, and most importantly, the thousands of Independence residents who rely on robust social services to maintain a basic standard of living, I am pleased to make this special presentation tonight. Increasingly, the work in nonprofit organizations intersects with public policy, and like most things, our best opportunity for progress happens at the local level. Together, we can be creative and help find solutions that work for our neighbors. Our award is called the Legislative Advocate of the Year, recognizing an individual who has helped strengthen low-income families through meaningful public legislation. During his tenure as City Manager, Zach Walker has walked alongside CSL and, I'm sure, many other organizations, offering strong support from city government. Zach has worked tirelessly to improve the lives of all Independence residents. And here are just a few, just some, of the ways that he has strengthened vulnerable families over the years. Zach has taken steps to reduce chronic homelessness in Independence and throughout the region by helping launch the Independence Together program by allocating ARPA funds for multiple years, which also led to a complimentary contract with MoDOT. The city has provided CSL's hashtag Giving Tuesday match for the last three years, including $25,000 in 2024, to bring more cold-weather sheltering opportunities, and the allocation of millions of city dollars from COVID-era federal grants to support stable housing and increasing utility assistance for low-income seniors through IRAP, through the IRAP program. Zach has also supported many activities to strengthen low-income families, raising awareness of the discrepancy in lifespan between Independence zip codes and his Commitment to Independence for All Strategic Plan, along with strategies to reduce health disparities, workforce development, activities to grow household income and provide better jobs, collaborated to support the production and maintenance of affordable housing, a commitment to advanced sidewalks and infrastructure to promote safe biking and walking, commitment to safe housing through the Rental Ready Act, and supporting the creation of the ARCH program to provide an appropriate emergency response for the unhoused or those who are suffering from mental health issues. It is not lost on us that it also takes a supportive council to make these initiatives happen, and we indeed thank you all for your support. What I think we'll remember most about Zach's effort is his willingness to listen, engage, and find solutions. As Zach departs for an exciting opportunity, we undoubtedly will miss his partnership and presence. However, let's agree to continue our progress together. This shouldn't be the end, but rather an opportunity to continue the good work in our community. The most vulnerable people in our community are counting on us, so we hope this spirit of partnership continues, strong as ever. Zach, your colleagues at CSL will forever call you a friend, and we will always treasure our work together. So tonight, we are pleased and honored to recognize you as the Community Services League 2025 Legislative Advocate of the Year.
Next on the agenda, we are proud to present, excuse me, the I-Star Award for this month of October 2025. And today, we are proud to honor Jody as our Employee of the Month, and Jody Baker from the Community Development Program Specialist. Jody is an example of an outstanding team member who consistently goes above and beyond in everything that she does. She's not only reliable and hardworking, but she brings a sense of kindness and collaboration to every interaction, whether it's helping a coworker, stepping in to help in a tough situation, or finding solutions when answers aren't immediately available. Jody always tries, or excuse me, Jody always rises to the occasion with a positive attitude and a strong work ethic. A great example of her dedication is the way she took charge of the tax abatement process. Jody has been proactive in working directly with residents, guiding them step by step and ensuring everything is completed accurately and on time. Her hands-on support and leadership have truly made a difference in the lives of people who needed that help. Jody, on behalf of the council, thank you for your commitment, compassion, and energy that you bring to our city every day, and congratulations on this award. And if I could have a motion in a second to make Jody's proclamation or resolution official, I would be grateful. We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion in a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And again, Jody, congratulations. Next up, we have an award for our utility department, and this will be presented to Joe Huggendaffer for the outstanding work that his team does with regards to IPL. This award is presented from the city of Springfield, so I feel like I'm cheating a little bit, giving away a award from someone else. So there we go. But City Utilities of Springfield recognizes our mutual aid partner, Independence Power and Light. For your support following the April 29 storm, your swift response and skilled assistance helped restore power to more than 50,000 customers during a time of great need. We are truly stronger together, and we cannot thank you enough for all the work that you did in helping out our city in our time of need. So with that, Joe, if you can come forward and receive the award on behalf of your team. The next is a proclamation for the National Night Out for IPD this past week. The National Night Out is a nationally-recognized annual community-building campaign that promotes strong partnerships between law enforcement and the community, and the community they serve, with the goal of enhancing neighborhood safety and unity. And whereas, this event provides an opportunity for neighbors to come together to show our solidarity, cooperation, and mutual respect, while also engaging directly with local police, fire, and emergency personnel in a positive and informal setting. And whereas, the city of Independence proudly supports the initiatives that bring neighbors together, that fosters this civic engagement, and promotes trust and communication between residents and public safety officials. And whereas, this National Night Out event was held throughout the city on Thursday, April, excuse me, October 2, 2025, allowing neighborhoods to host block parties, cookouts, safety demonstrations, and family-friendly gatherings. And that is so important for all of us to get together and to have the opportunity to do that. And this will be presented to Interim Chief Brinkley. And Interim Chief, if you could come forward, I would be grateful. For many of you, you may not know or may know that Chief, Interim Chief Brinkley is brand-new to the city, just came within the last week or so. Is that right, Chief?
That is correct.
So I wanted to give him the opportunity to introduce himself to everyone in the city, and so Chief Brinkley, the floor is yours.
Thank you. It's been a while since I've been up on the podium, actually addressing mayor and council, but I want to say thank you. This is my second full week at the city of Independence, and it has been a long ride, like drinking water through a fire hose, but everyone has been very gracious, and I've got a chance to meet almost every single man and woman of our police department, and I can tell you, we have a wonderful staff that is very eager and very proud of what they do to protect this community. So I am ecstatic to be here, to serve you all.
Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate you taking the time, Dennis.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have another proclamation, pardon me, for a city of Independence committed to ensuring safety and security for all those living in the city, and this is going to be presented to Assistant Chief John Dixon for Fire Safety Week. And so, Chief, just let me read a couple of things here. Whereas, fire remains a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and the presence of lithium batteries in many household devices introduce unique fire risk. And whereas, most electronics used in home today, including smartphones, tablets, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters, and toys are powered by lithium batteries, which, if they're misused or damaged, or improperly stored or changed, can overheat, start a fire, or explode. And whereas, the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, and the Independence Fire Department, the Fire Prevention Division, reports an increase in battery-related fires, underscores the need for public education on the safe use of lithium batteries. And whereas, the resident should follow three key calls to action: buy only listed products, change batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. And whereas, lithium batteries store a large amount of energy in a small space, and improper use, such as overcharging or use of off-brand chargers without safety certifications, can expose those batteries or damage them, and can result in a fire or an explosion in your home or your office. And then whereas, proper disposal and recycling of lithium batteries help prevent environmental hazards, reduces fire risk in our home and our community. So therefore, this council wants to recognize this week, October 5th to October 11th, as Fire Prevention Week, and Assistant Chief John Dixon, please come forward to receive this proclamation. Could I have a motion for allowing non-residents to speak in citizen's request, please?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to suspend the rules of procedures to allow non-residents to speak.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And the motion carries seven in favor, zero opposed. This brings us to the first speaker this evening, Corey Atkins. Please come for, Atkinson, please come forward, give us your name and your address, and you have five minutes. And it's Cody. Please forgive me.
Thank you. I'll let it slide this time. Cody Atkinson, 722 West Waldo Avenue, also known as the Sue Gentry House. So I am here today to present a potential idea for making sure the Sermon Center is viable for the next several decades. The Sermon Center has been the center of much discussion over the past couple of years. It's over 100 years old, with problems you'd expect from a 100-plus-year-old building, especially one built on a spring. But I think it is a historic structure that tells the city, tells the story of Independence like few others, and I hope that we can set it up for future success. Formerly, the location of the Dodgeon Street Power Plant, the Sermon Center building we recognize today, was built at the turn of the 20th century and was upgraded substantially in the late '20s and '30s by a local engineering firm. Today, we know it as hosting a community center, the Powerhouse Theater, and fitness spaces. If you haven't gone and checked it out, it's a really wonderful space. Of course, everyone knows that it has no shortage of issues, given its age and placement over the spring system. The basement is constantly full of water and is contributing to the degradation of its foundation. Additionally, the budget posted online states that memberships are down substantially from a peak of over 2,000 to around 450 today. Combining this drop-off in membership with rising maintenance cost, some have suggested that maybe we start to look at alternatives to the Sermon Center completely. However, I believe the Sermon Center is worth saving. The building itself, I find to be striking, with large windows set in a brick exterior harkening back to the days of rapid growth and industry advancement in this city. It finds its current utility in acting as a host for various community events, and we've recently poured a substantial amount of money into new windows that retain its historic look and a new roof. Additionally, exploration by the city to add it to the National Register of Historic Places may enable us to take advantage of tax credits to substantially reduce repair costs. To me, this is a great opportunity to think creatively about how we can best go about preserving the history that sets this city apart from others in the metro, while also responding to community desires presented at the recent study session on the Parks Master Plan. As you can see, there are a number of things respondents to the survey stated they would like to see as part of the master plan moving forward, to include an interior pool for programs available to all ages, a community center, indoor fitness space, senior and teen indoor activity spaces, life skill programs, programs for individuals with disabilities, before, after, and school break programs, and indoor courts. And I'm referencing a little packet here, so if it sounds like I'm doing a presentation, because I am, so ask me for more later. Yeah. So 88 respondents told us they wanted to save our historic sites, and 75% were even willing to support a bond that improved our parks and facilities. Presenters also made note of a few other things I think are important in informing how we should look at future proposals, like noting our assets are underutilized multiple times. We need to provide more programs to increase revenue. Residents support our parks in historic sites, and this city, again, is uniquely historic, and that we should leverage that, not just to retain residents, but to attract new residents. So I have an aerial view shot of the Sermon Center as it sits today, and space that I believe offers an opportunity for expansion. But you know, you have to ask, who should be leading that expansion? Is it the city? Is it a developer that comes forward to make promises they may or may not keep? Or maybe, we should look for leadership on expansion from an organization that no longer resides in Independence, but I hear once back in. Maybe it would even be helpful if they have over 160 years of experience with this exact sort of project. Maybe we should look to the YMCA and bring them back. Their facilities are well-kept, well-run, and cover almost every high-priority issue identified by respondents in the park survey. If you've been to a Y recently, they're buzzing with life, as people of all ages enjoy aquatic space, fitness facilities, life skill programs, and all sorts of other indoor recreation. If interest exists and an organization like the Y comes to town again, not only will we tick off a number of boxes that our community wants, but we can do it in a manner that saves the square, saves history, attracts folks up an ailing Nolan Road, creates an anchor asset next to the square, and does it in a manner that the entirety of the financial burden isn't on the Independence taxpayer.
You have one minute, sir.
I believe there is tremendous opportunity to build around the history of Independence by respecting the past while planning for the future. If the council agrees, I believe conversations with the Y are a good start. But the firm I mentioned earlier is Black and Beach, and they were involved in the design and construction of the Sermon Center when it was replacing the Dodgeon Street Power Plant over 100 years ago. Maybe they would like to see a piece of their history preserved as well. Both the Y and Black and Beach have foundations, and we could always work to find other foundations and grants to further reduce taxpayer burden. I hope you agree that in the future, we should be looking for restoration and reinvention of historic sites, not for the lowest demolition cost.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Michael Talcott. Mr. Talcott, quick question. You have spoken about Wally's before, is that correct? So be limited to three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Talcott, 1901 South Lake Drive. I'm here once again to encourage you to approve the special use permit for the Wally's project. I shouldn't have to speak so often on this issue, however, I've been sensing some pushback or hesitancy on this development. We should be able to trust the council on a common sense decision like this. However, we've had a history of some very poor decisions from this in past councils, some of which we are still suffering from, such as the unnecessary $10 million expenditure on Missouri City, voting down IPL generation, the attempt to sell IPL, and the Bass Pro-Tiff, et cetera. The city needs the Wally's development. If we lose the Royals and/or Chiefs, there's little reason to stop in Independence. Travelers will just drive right on into Kansas City. The city needs the job opportunities, the tax revenues, and the needed attention to bring tourists into our various other tourism sites. The city needs to show they are welcoming to new developers. Independence, the queen city of the trails, the great American story, needs to partner with Wally's, the great American road trip. It's a no-brainer. Please vote to approve Ordinance 25087, special use permit for Wally's. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Lucy Young. And Lucy, I believe you've spoken on Wally's before, and be limited to three minutes.
Lucy Young, 2320 Viking Drive, Independence, Missouri 64057. In May 2022, East Gate Commercial Center, aka North Point, benefited from a City Council-approved cost-share agreement with the state of Missouri for the I-70 and Little Blue Parkway interchange project. That agreement made improvements to handle the already existing traffic capacity. The city's cost was $1,732,500 paid out of state, excuse The city's cost was $1,732,500 paid out of state, excuse me, street sales tax. Five presently seated council members approved that ordinance. In 2021, Cargo Largo asked for the 20-year Chapter 10353 property tax abatement and reimbursements from the street sales tax, Nolan Road CID sales tax, and from the general sales tax revenues to pay for their 3.4 million street dollars of street improvements. Two presently seated council members approved this project. April 21st, 2025, the City of Independence Industrial Development Authority approved the Stifel engagement letter regarding the Wally's Independence Project. Language from that document. "The industrial development authority of the City of Independence, Missouri and Stifel are entering into this engagement to confirm that they are engaged in discussions related to a potential issue of municipal securities related to the Wally's Independence Project." These were public documents. How on earth was this a surprise to any council member? Cargo Largo didn't receive, didn't release their incentives either when their project came forward. The DKMT consultants told you that IPL must increase commercial developments to keep our electrical rates lower. The city can't afford to fix the Nolan Road or I-70 traffic problems without Wally's investment. In this economy, we need the additional 200 jobs that will reduce our unemployment rates. I'll remind you that when the Cargo Largo brought in their jobs, 300 of those 400 jobs were already employees in Kansas City, and they simply moved into Independence. These are 200 new jobs.
You have one minute.
Wally's will put another pin in the map for Independence. It will draw in tourists. Please approve the Wally's project. Are we going to prosper, or are we continuing, going to continue to decline? And as you can see here, this is from the 2023 budget, where in the manager's report it said, "We must grow our revenues." DKMT, we spent a lot of money on that study. And I'm here to tell you, almost $2 million to fix an existing roadway to bring in one end of the I-70 corridor, when a developer wants to spend out-of-pocket on his, why should they not be reimbursed for their work on I-70 as other developers have been previously? The Cargo Largo did not really, did not release their incentives either.
You have three minutes, thank you. Next up, next up is Becky Haake. Becky, please come forward, and I believe you've spoken on Wally's before too, so you'll have three minutes. Excuse me.
Becky Haake, 10516 East 26 Terrace. I'm here this evening to talk about Wally's and how a good thing for Nolan Road, and what a good thing for the Nolan Road and the city this would be, between the new business in a location that has, you know, that has caused many problems over the past year, this would make it thrive.
Can you pull the mic down? It's a little bit perfect, thank you.
I'm shorter than I think I am.
That's excellent.
They will also be bringing around 200 new jobs to the city, which would be, which would be great, and with the expected sales revenue from there, it would greatly improve our sales tax revenue. Also, the needed infrastructure on Nolan Road. Some of that has been on our list for several years. That would take care of some of those problems. At an earlier meeting, we heard Andy's Custard manager talk about how they were excited for Wally's because that would also, they believed, would help their businesses, and I think it would help other businesses around that area. It would introduce new travelers to our city, which could increase tourism, and I see this as a plus. We've heard about the problems that people think there'll be more traffic. Well, you synchronize the lights, you fix some intersections. I mean, a little bit more traffic's not going to hurt for the, for the benefits we can get with Wally's. With the infrastructure changes should help, with the Stifel lights synchronized, so as far as I'm concerned, it's common sense. But, there's another issue tonight too on the agenda, and that's the Nolan Road South CID. They're wanting to change that to cover the HVAC and roof repair. To me, that sounds like normal maintenance.
And Becky?
I can't combine.
Well, no, you can complain.
No, I can't combine, I said.
Right, you can't combine, you've got to speak on one topic.
All right, well then I guess I'm done.
Thank you. Next up is Gary George, and Gary, you have not spoken on this topic before, so you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and Gary George, Seven Beach Drive, Lake Tapewinkle, Missouri. Long-time city employee, I was here 32 years and a month. Went to Alpharetta, Georgia, I was there 16 years. I wore that police uniform a long time, 48 years' worth, but I came back to Independence because it's home. I look around here and I see some old faces tonight, Bill Moore, back here, worked with him, the city attorney for a long, long time, and two finance department employees that sat in there with Mr. Fears, the mayor of Rowland, and had great memories of all those days. But, I'm here tonight to speak on the Voya account. And it's all good. I didn't come up here to complain, I just come up here to say that a few weeks ago, Melissa, the city's finance director, notified Marlon and I and a few of us that we needed to come up, she had some news for us, and anyway, she talked about Voya account, we also met with the new HR director, wonderful lady, Carissa. And, they talked about the fee adjustments that was going to be there. Let me tell you about my personal experience of fee adjustments on Voya accounts, and that's, that was it. When I was with the City of Independence, I had a Voya account. Went to Alpharetta, Georgia, a year or two after that, somebody said, "Well, you need to join ours." So, their Voya account was called TransAmerica, same deal, you know, just different bank, different, different holding company. And it was great. Rolled it over. I made a lot of money sometimes, in some years, 2008, '09, and '10, boo, boy, you know, I thought, where'd, where'd my money go? I should be going to a casino! But, it all, it all worked out, but when I was 63 years old, I thought, wait a minute, I can't go through another 2008, '09, and '10. So I talked to TransAmerica rep, and he goes, "Lock it in." He goes, "Lock it in at 3%, 4%, you will never have to worry about it again." And I didn't, not even today. I checked my account last week, still TransAmerica, Sioux City, Iowa, and never been mentioned of a fee. And I think that's, that's really what it's about, to give you a good perspective of why people lock it in. When I turned 63 years old, I could have been making 7% or 8% or 9%, or I could have been losing 2% from that 4%. But they give this as a benefit to retirees, that you can lock in at 4%, you don't have to ever worry about a fee, losing money, anything about it. You don't make as much, but it's guaranteed, and so you could take it into your older years like myself, and, and it's really good. When this came up, I thought, boy, this don't seem quite right. So anyway, we, we talked to a few people, and we thought, how are we, how are we going to deal with this? And Bob had talked with Councilmember Stewart, talked with the mayor, and they said, "Well, we'll move it to the study session and see what we can do with it." Couple days later, Councilmember Perkins called me, and he goes, "I talked to Zach Walker, we could, we could amend this resolution and fix this." And I so appreciate that, because I've heard, talked with a few of you, a few of you have sent me emails, texts, that we support you, this is a good idea. But, give you all a good perspective of this, this is why these locked percentage accounts are there, locked in at 3%, locked in at 4%.
You have one minute, sir.
How many? One, okay, that's, that really went fast, so. Anyway, I, I thank you for this, that I feel good about the vote, I'm not worried about it, and we're good there. But, I just want to tell you what, I wear this shirt with pride. Long-term City of Independence employee. 55 years ago, I started the Kent City Missouri Police Academy, still here. I'm, I plan to draw on this retirement for good, down to good 10, 15 years, maybe 20, I don't know, we'll work on it, but thanks to all of you, we appreciate you.
Thank you. Next up is William Torres. Mr. Torres, please state your name and your address, please. And Mr. Torres, if I'm correct, you've talked about Wally's before?
Not before the council.
Not before the council?
No.
Okay.
So I got five minutes?
Okay, it'll be five minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, well, from what I've heard tonight, well, my name is William Torres, and...
And your address, please.
11504 East 33rd Terrace, Independence. I guess, from what I've heard tonight, I'm representing the no-brainer with no common sense segment of the city, because I would like to, what I'm requesting is a pause, as you all know. But, let me get into the presentation. The Wally's traffic study is no longer applicable because of Price Chopper's clearly stated intentions to relocate to the Nolan Fashion Square. This completely alters the traffic patterns in study area. Also, one could assume that the space vacated by Price Chopper will be occupied by a business that will generate similar traffic. This results in a net gain of traffic for the study area. Also, the fully developed Fashion Square calls for an increase in commercial square footage, which will attract even more traffic. Furthermore, the Wally's study originally intended to use a methodology from the Trip Generation Manual 11th Edition. The problem with that manual was that it would not accurately address predicting traffic for megapump travel centers. However, the International Transportation Committee corrected this oversight just recently and issued the 12th edition just about a month ago, last August, which should now be used. In fact, the, the announcement of the updated version was filmed at a Buc-E's location. So the traffic study should be revised using the latest analysis tools available. I have other traffic study questions, I have technical engineering issues, construction-related issues, benzene concerns far and beyond what has been mentioned in the past and probably will be mentioned tonight, I don't know, and environmental concerns that have not been spoken about but significantly affect the city's financial interest in this project. This is not the forum to discuss these complicated issues, but they do need to be considered. Regarding the workforce predictions, there's a shortage of service workers throughout the city. I do not see how the math works out where promising 200 to 300 more new jobs in an existing labor pool shortage is going to benefit existing small businesses. The meager increase in traffic from a Wally's visit may not be enough for them to complete, to compete or stay in business. One issue that has not been discussed is the indiscriminate, cruel, unfettered, unconstitutional ice rays that are destined to be carried out in this city. This will impact this project as well as others. Many immigrants make up the labor, service, professional, and even city employee workforce. Many valuable and successful immigrant businesses exist along the corridor today. You may not know this, but there's actually a Hispanic business that was featured in the New York Times. You must also factor in the real-world implications of the tariff-induced cost hikes to building materials.
You have one minute, sir.
Okay, I'm honest with you. This is going to affect, of course, building materials, electronic equipment, controls, food items, and on and on. These conditions did not exist at the beginning of this project. It must be evaluated now to see how it affects the city's financial contributions. If this project is as promising as claimed, a two-week pause to consider these factors should not harm anything.
Thank you very much. Next up is Lynn Baker, and please state your name and address.
I'm Lynn Baker, I live on 19th Street Court South, Independence, on the eastern side. I'm, thank you very much for allowing me to speak, mayor and council. I'm here to support the Wally's, and these are the facts as I understand them. Independence is not a wealthy city. When I arrived some, some many years ago, Leeds, the GM plant at Leeds was working, Armco was working, Alice Chalmers was working. Now, most of the manufacturing of our city has disappeared. I also think we need the money generated by the taxes that Wally's would bring. And last, is the potential location we would gain tax money from visitors and travels. That's all I have to say, thank you for listening, and thank you, Zach Walker, for your time in Independence, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Next up is Mike Huff, and Mike, you'll have five minutes, please state your name and address, please.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Mike Huff, 16501 East George Franklin. I'm up here to speak a little bit about the increases on the utilities as far as the meter charges and the sewer and water issues that's going on here. Number one is, most complaints you get or you hear about is the high bills in the city, and I just don't, I totally disagree with this, our utilities are financially in good shape. In fact, our city, as I read an article this morning where the city's reserve went from 5% to 15%, thank you, Mr. Walker. But anyway, not real, real good about this. Like I said, a lot of people have complained about their high bills, it's every day, and this thing I've been hearing lately is that, you know, Spire, well, they're cheaper, or they're more expensive on their meters, why, you know, this is not going to hurt us for five bucks. Well, Spire happens to be a private company, this utility's owned by the citizens of this city. And anyway, I just, I don't think it's good timing, we just got over this Jackson County tobacco, people are starting to feel a bit better, trying to figure out their resources and stuff, but other than that, I hope that you all represent the citizens, not the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is John Marshall, and John, you'll have five minutes, and please state your name and your address, please.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Mayor and the members of the council for allowing me to speak.
And John, I might ask you just to adjust your microphone a little bit.
Okay. I guess I'm not as short as the... But anyway, I continue to struggle with my HOA. They are just not following the rules of our HOA. My next-door neighbor is causing me problems. They continue to trespass on my property, they have committed crimes and misdemeanors on my property, they've removed property stakes from two separate surveys on my property, and I've yet to obtain any relief from the members of the board. And I did obtain a resolution with the majority of the board members in May of '24, which was to create a pebble path at my own expense to, because my property is surrounded by common area, I don't share a common property line with any other member in the Thornburg. And, so, but yet, what they're... And, um, so, but yet, what they're, what they're trying to do is really circumvent the replat process and allow people to take over common area without coming before the city council to approve the replat. And the, my next-door neighbors that are, uh, committing crimes on my property actually refer to the thirty feet of common area between our two properties as their backyard. So that's essentially a replat, uh, without, you know, being, making it official. And so that, I'm, uh, and today, the reason why I'm here is because today, our previous, uh, president, uh, who's, who's term ended in September, just last month, uh, but I guess our current president, president is out of town today or something. So our previous president and our current, um, vice president showed up at my property unannounced, and they recorded me, uh, the vice president recorded me with her phone, and I didn't, I didn't agree to that. I wasn't even aware of it in the beginning because I was talking to the previous president, and then I looked over and she had her phone, she had her phone like this, and I says, are you recording me? And she goes, yes. And I says, I didn't, you didn't, first of all, you didn't ask, and then I didn't agree. Uh, so, but they, they basically telling me they're going to sue me, uh, because of the pebble path that they originally told me that I had, uh, you know, that they agreed with. Because the previous president nodded his head and said, yes, and he'd send out an email and let everybody know. Instead, he sent an email to the chutes asking if they objected. And like a two-year-old, you know, oh, do you want to go to bed at seven o'clock? You know, a two-year-old doesn't want to do that. So they objected. But, so it's sort of like the fox, you know, and the hen house kind of thing. I mean, because the, the people that are the criminals are being allowed to veto something that I already got an approval from, the board, and now the board is threatening to sue me, uh, because of the pebble path that is the only thing that keeps them off my property. They, they continue to trespass on my property. Uh, the, the misses of, of that couple that lived next door to me, she records me with her phone, just like the vice president did today, and they've lit up my house like, I mean, like it was a drive-in movie screen, the side of my house. I mean, and just, uh, a litany of other things, on and on and on. And I just, I just want the same right that anybody else in the Thornburg has, which is to live in their own property in peace.
You have one minute, sir.
And I've not been able to do that. And I, I was just, it'd be one thing if they were following the covenants, but they're not following the covenants. That our neighborhood is essentially run by a clique, and they just make it up as they go along. And, you know, so I, I think that's when oversight needs to come in and, you know, take charge. And that's why I'm here tonight, asking for relief from the city council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Judy Brooks, and please come forward and state your name and address, please.
Judy Brooks, thirty-nine oh four South Dodgen Avenue. I have some concerns regarding the Wally's development. Um, after the first, um, meeting back at the end of July, I had sent an email to Wally's with a couple of questions and never did get a response. Um, at the moment, I live in one of the housing developments right close to the Wally's. Um, from what I understand right now, Canterbury Place is part of what they own. There is, and I've called the city several times over the last few weeks, requesting that the weeds be mowed and the trash picked up. There's also been some homeless hanging out in that area. Um, so far, the weeds and trash, as of yesterday, have not been taken care of, even though I've called several times in the last few weeks. Uh, my second concern is, I've heard this brought up, but haven't heard it addressed, how Wally's going to mitigate the concerns with the benzene. Since I live right close, I certainly don't want to be drinking contaminated water. Uh, my third concern is, there's already, I realize they're a lot smaller, but there's already three gas stations in the area. So I kind of wonder if Wally's is just going to take all their business away, and then we just have more empty buildings along the road there. So I'd like to see those concerns addressed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And there's no other citizens' requests, so that brings us to our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I move for approval for the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second? Thank you. We've got a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull anything for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I'd like to pull number two and number seven, please. Is that right? Yep, number two and seven.
Okay. Hold on so I can follow along. Councilman McCandless?
Uh, I also wanted to pull number seven, so for a possible postponement.
Okay. Anyone else, other items want to be pulled for separate consideration? Going once, going twice. Number two and number seven are the only times it's going to be pulled separately. All right, we've got a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Seeing no other further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for the consent agenda, minus item number two and seven, sorry.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And the consent agenda, minus items number two and number seven, is approved, seven in favor, zero opposed. Item number two, Councilmember Perkins, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion for approval.
Thank you very much. We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. We've got a motion and a second for item number two. Councilmember Perkins, please proceed.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am excited to announce that we do have a bid in, and we are going to vote on this bid tonight, and this is for the Kentucky Avenue Bridge over Mill Creek, as well as the, um, as well as the Chrysler Bridge. One of the exciting things that we're able to do with the passage of question number two last April with our general obligation bond is that we can have more purchasing and buying power. We're able to bundle some of these projects together. I won't go into long story and history of why it's brought us this to this point on non-responsive to bids, but with the, uh, passage of number two and has increased our ability to do a lot of different purchasing and bundling to move the city forward. So tonight, we are going to vote on these two projects, get them moving. Once a notice to proceed is given, we will have eighty to a hundred and twenty days for completion. I believe we are looking for, um, late winter. Let me double-check here. Hold, please. We are looking for spring, early spring for Kentucky Bridge and summer of twenty-six for the Chrysler Bridge. So I'm excited to get this done. So let's move on with the vote, please.
Very good.
Thank you.
Anyone else other further discussions? If I may, Mr. City Manager, I just had one question for one constituent on this one, and obviously, since we only got one bid, obviously, people are concerned that we are, in fact, it's a fair and just bid. And I know you can run the numbers on it, and I know, uh, Deputy City Manager Lisa Reynolds did that, but I just want to confirm for everyone who's watching that we got one bid, but you did run the numbers to say that it is reasonable within the realm of, of what is reasonable for this kind of a bid.
It, yes, sir, it does. Um, closely aligning with the, um, city engineer's estimate for these projects. So even though we just got one bid on this, um, we are pleased that it's a, a fair, equitable, and responsible, uh, bid. So felt comfortable bringing this one forward to the council for your consideration.
Very good, and very pleased to hear that. And I know lots of people who live along there and are taking the routes around are very pleased, uh, and particularly when there are times when the train is there, you've sometimes have to wait a while. So that certainly helps. So very, very good. Excellent. That's all I had. Is anyone else? Other comments or questions? Seeing nothing else, there is a motion and a second, so Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item number two of the consent agenda passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to item number seven. Councilmember Perkins, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, am going to make a motion to amend. I move to amend the proposed action to authorize the city to enter a, to, into a contract with Voya for option one in place of option two for the city's optional deferred compensation plan. This amendment would substitute question option one as the selected course of action for the purpose of the contract under consideration. All references to option two and the attached contract and supporting documents shall be revised accordingly to reflect the change to option one.
I second.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second to amend it, uh, to stay, to state, if I'm hearing you correctly, councilmember, uh, to vote in favor of option number one of the two options that was presented by Voya.
Correct.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Um, I'm not quite sure how, uh, Mr. Cover would recommend that we do this. Uh, I am willing to consider option one, but because this is a complicated issue that I don't fully understand, I would appreciate two more weeks to better understand how some employees benefit, some employees, um, see increased fees, and some employees don't have any change at all. So I feel as though I don't have all of the information I need to be fully able to vote on this tonight. Um, can I make a second motion that we postpone for two weeks, or do I have to wait and vote on the First Amendment?
You'll have to wait and, and vote on the First Amendment. I, I'm hearing, if that's, that would be my understanding. Is that correct, Mr. Cover?
Because, uh, uh, unless that, unless the, the current amendment has, is withdrawn, then yes, you need to vote on, vote on the current amendment, and then you could still make a motion to, to postpone it, and we would have that version at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. So we're still on the amendment here for the discussion. Any further discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Um, well, I've been involved with, uh, retirement plans my entire career and have even served as an investment advisor for a company 401K plan. Uh, what this contract is for is for the record-keeping of what the city's equivalent is to a corporate 401K plan. The option proposed by the RFP reviewers and the city employee committee tasked to evaluate the plan proposes continuing the plan that earns the participants a fixed four percent. So that would continue just as, uh, both, both, um, the option one and option two would continue. Uh, I'm not, honestly, not sure how Voya can do that, given the current is, interest rate and climate, but, um, they've offered that option, and so that's a good thing, if that's how, uh, the participants want to invest. But all the, all retirement plans, um, no matter what kind they are, have required record-keeping that must be done. Fees typically passed along to the participants are how they pay for the tasks of running the plan, sending out statements, those sorts of things. Um, that's just a requirement of every plan and has to be paid in some way. My understanding is that this four percent fixed plan, uh, used to be an annuity, uh, back before two thousand eighteen, but was changed to a more typical plan at that time. At, at that time, Voya offered this four percent plan, and then in two thousand twenty, when, uh, the agreement came up for renewal, apparently there were some fund, um, there were some, um, funds refunded to participants, but the plan has been in place for the last five years, was approved at that time. I've seen documentation to that effect, but I've been told there is no documentation stating that, that participants, um, were guaranteed they would not have to pay a record, record-keeping fee. What this amendment would do is continue the plan previously in place, which essentially proposes that not all participants would pay these record-keeping fees. So let's be real clear on what's being proposed. Currently, there are nine hundred and fifty-three participants, both active employees and retirees, participating in these plans. Of that number, four hundred and thirteen invest in this four percent plan, and the remainder invest in some sort of stock and bond portfolio. Of that four hundred and thirteen that invest in the four percent plan, a hundred and ten, which are active employees, pay a record-keeping fee and have money invested in that fixed account. The other two hundred and three pay no record-keeping fee. Also, um, the other group of seven hundred and fifty employees and retirees invested in stocks and bonds, they also pay a record-keeping fee. So only the group of a hundred and sixty-six retirees and thirty-seven active employees don't pay that fee. But let's be even more clear. That fee is getting paid. It's just not being paid by those two hundred and three people. No, in reality, the seven hundred and fifty people are paying both what is their fee and the fee of the two hundred and three. So essentially, the active employees and the retirees in some sort of stock and bond portfolio are paying the fee for the two hundred and three and subsidizing that group. So essentially, we have an example of, for example, we have, um, let's say, a twenty-something employee, new employee at the city, starting their job out here, and they're being asked to pay part of the fees of what the two hundred and three people not paying any fee are, are, are benefiting from. And so I ask myself, how is this equitable? Why wouldn't each participant pay their share of the record-keeping costs? I think they should, and that's why I can't support this amendment. It essentially takes a portion of the planned participants and says, we're going to ask the other participants to cover your costs. And that, in my opinion, is not right, and I can't support this type of inequity, and I can't vote for this amendment.
Thank you. Anyone else other further discussion on the amendment? Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing no further discussion on the amendment, I will call a vote for the amendment. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment.
Councilmember Fears?
No.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
No.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the amendment passes five in favor, two opposed. Councilman McCandless, the floor is yours. I think you wanted to make a motion or... Roll down, okay. That was the amendment. This takes us back to the main motion. Is there any further discussion on the Voya contract? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, call the roll on item number seven, please.
Councilmember Fears?
No.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
No.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And item number seven on the consent agenda passes five in favor, two opposed, and that brings us to our regular meeting, and this is a public information, and I will introduce, start the public information meeting, or public hearing, excuse me, and, uh, and this one is for information purposes only.
A public hearing for the application to rezone the properties at seven-ten and seven-twenty West Maple Avenue from R-30 High Density Residential and C-2 General Commercial to R-6 Single Family Residential. New information only.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Rick Arroyo. I'm the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. This rezoning was considered by Planning Commission on August twelfth of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. Uh, this is an application to correctly zone two houses at seven-ten West Maple and seven-twenty West Maple. Uh, both of these are within the Truman Heritage District and the Harry S. Truman National Historic Landmark District, uh, from C-2 Commercial and R-30 Residential to R-6 Single Family. Uh, applicant does wish to restore, repair, and update the interiors of both of these structures. I have no new information to provide.
Thank you. With that, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, any further discussion from the council? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero eight five, second reading and ordinance... Twenty-five dash zero eight five, second reading, and ordinance approving a rezoning from District R30 slash PUD High Density Residential slash Planned Unit Development and District C2 General Commercial to District R6 Single Family Residential for the properties located at 710 and 720 West Maple Avenue, second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on twenty-five zero eight five? Seeing no discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-five zero eight five passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to a full public hearing. I'll open this public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
A public hearing for the amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the Independent City Code relating to fuel sales and auto repair, full public hearing.
Thank you again. This code amendment was considered by Planning Commission on August 26th of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this code amendment. Currently, gasoline and fuel sales, along with motor vehicle repair businesses, must have a 750-foot separation from each other. This code amendment would exempt properties that are within 400 feet of the interstate and therefore not have to meet that 750-foot distance. I have no new information for this full public hearing.
Thank you. Any questions, council?
I do have a question.
Please proceed.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm not sure whether this is for Mr. Rural, Mr. City Manager, I'm not sure who wants to answer, but I'm just trying to I'm kind of curious, why aren't we? I mean, I think this is for the Wally's project. I mean, it is necessary to move forward with Wally's. Is that be correct?
That would be correct.
And so why are we not dealing with this on like a special, you know, situation or a special dispensation as opposed to changing the whole UDO?
The current language in the UDO in its entirety would not allow for Wally's or a similar establishment to operate in this kind of location, so it does necessitate a change to the Unified Development Ordinance to allow for this type of use anywhere in this type of location. The next item up, the special use permit, then, is the special condition specific to this business and that property site.
Right. I'm just trying to understand why why this why we chose to do a UDO amendment that affects the whole city versus a, you know, just addressing this one situation?
Yeah, and because the UDO as currently crafted does not allow for this kind of
So we can't make that kind of a?
Correct.
All right, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Anyone else other further discussion? All right, this is a full public hearing, so I will call three times for anyone who would like to come forward and talk on this item. Anyone like to come and speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for informational purposes? That's the first call. Second call, anyone want to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for informational purposes only? That's the second call. Third and final call, anyone want to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for informational purposes only? Third and final call. With that, I will close this public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero eight six, second reading, and ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the Independent City Code pertaining to motor vehicle repair and gasoline and fuel sales, second reading.
Thank you. Anyone else want to have any discussions on twenty-five zero eight six? Mr. City Manager, just a quick question. Anything for clarification for us that need to be added from your perspective?
Nothing further, sir.
Thank you. With that being said, and no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for twenty-five zero eight six.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-five zero eight six passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to item number three A, and this is a public information or public hearing for information's purpose only, so I'll open this public hearing.
A public hearing for the special use permit application to operate a gas station at 4023 South Nolan Road. New information only.
Thank you. Thank you again. This is the special use permit that was considered by Planning Commission also on August 26th of this year. Planning Commission did recommend in favor of this. This application is to operate a gas station, better known as the Wally's, that has more than 25 pumps at 4023 South Nolan Road, which is now currently a vacant property, which was previously the site of a Kmart and venture. I have no new information to provide for this full public hearing. However, I will note that the applicant is here. Have you if you do have questions outside of staff?
Thank you very much. I will close the public hearing, but if there's any questions, anyone like to ask, please proceed. Anyone have any questions for council? Okay. All right. All right, with that being said, Madam City Clerk, please proceed to twenty-five zero eight seven.
Twenty-five dash zero eight seven, second reading, and ordinance approving a special use permit to operate a gas station at 4023 South Nolan Road, Independence, Missouri, second reading.
Please proceed.
Motion to amend this item. In section two, where we list out the conditions under the special use permit is approved, I'd like to add an item item after item in, excuse me, I'd like to add in item two after the words traffic impact study, including but not limited to South Nolan Road, Lynn Court Drive, and Canterbury Place. And I'd also like to add an item number 15 to the list of conditions that any the reads any substantive proposed modification to the aforementioned conditions shall only be approved by the city council through an ordinance amendment. If I receive a second, I'd like to speak to this.
Absolutely. Okay, we've got a motion and a second for the amendment, and please proceed.
So my goal in this amendment is really twofold. I think in regards to the traffic elements, that it's helpful to list the conditions to outline the areas that are impacted by the traffic study and have it in the ordinance, the areas which the folks at Wally's have agreed to address. I realize this does not specify the details, which is why it says not limited to, and why it refers to the traffic study, but in my mind, it helps clarify what roadways are being worked on. My goal in adding item number 15 is not to constrain the process at all, but this is a critically important development at a major entrance to our city. And these conditions under which we're granting this special use permit are the elements of the plan we as a council are agreeing to and outline what circumstances we're giving this special use permit. It's been suggested that this is not necessary, and hopefully it won't be, but it's certainly not hurting anything. It's kind of a belt and suspenders approach, if you will. I simply think this is a critical enough project, both in terms of what's being done and the placement of it in our city, that this council and the taxpayers we represent should be informed of any significant modifications to these conditions. And so that's the purpose of this amendment.
Thank you very much. Anyone else other further discussion on this amendment?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed. Councilmember Stewart, if I could allow Councilmember McCandless to go first, she just beat you by just a hair.
That would be fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, I want to be sure that we are not creating unnecessary delays for Wally's project. One thing we want independence to be known for is that this is a good place to do business, and we know that capital goes where capital's welcome. That doesn't mean that we aren't good partners so that we make sure that the things done are in the benefit of the community, but I want to be sure that substantive means substantive, so they won't be coming back to the council for approval of changing where light poles are, manhole covers, or things like that. We're talking about functional changes to a submitted plan. For example, they're going to expand their footprint by 10% or they're going to completely reroute their stormwater system, just that the city council would be aware of those changes. Is that a fair interpretation of this amendment?
Yes, I would say that's a very fair interpretation.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else other further discussion? Oh, thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
That actually kind of answered my question. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? I've got an amendment to the amendment. I think we should do this for cargo largo, and that since cargo largo has not completed the railroad crossing, that we should in fact close them down until they get the railroad crossing fixed, because why should we allow a business like that to operate in that city? And if we're going to have this kind of if we're going to have these kind of requirements for businesses within our city, then we should have that for cargo largo. So I offer the amendment that we include language to include cargo largo, and until they get the railroad crossing fixed, they need to cease operation. Because that's what we're going to do here. Please proceed. Let's not do that. Do I have a second to the amendment? Looks like it fails for a second. That is fine. The statement is made. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So a substantive substantive or major change would come back to the council anyway? Is that correct?
Yeah, if if there was anything that fell outside of the the special use permit or just, you know, regular city code as it were, applied to any similar use, those would be handled at the administrative level. And not to be flippant, but if the applicant decided to plant maple trees instead of birch trees, that's something that's going to be worked out within the confines of the administrative staff level. We're talking, you know, major infrastructure, you know, requirements that would, you know, if for some reason the applicant weren't able to or felt differently about conformance with those and was requesting deviation from those, those were things that staff would lack the authority to address and would need to come back to the council.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? On the amendment?
Mr. City Manager, have we had instances where we've had substantive changes in major projects that have had to come back to the council for consideration?
Yes, we have, and trying to think of a recent example. If memory does serve correctly, I believe we've had to amend the development agreement with North Point Development at the East Case Commerce Center on at least one occasion. Feel fairly confident that that's that's one of the more recent and probably larger examples where original terms were changing, and we came back to the council after negotiating those with the developer to bring those forward for your consideration and approval, because again, we lack the authority to make those at the staff level.
So this just puts in writing what our normal procedures are so that our partners know what to expect?
That that would be my interpretation, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Covert, if I may ask, amendment condition number 15 adds a requirement that any further changes to the conditions of the special use permit must be formally approved by the city council by an ordinance, but it also said substantive changes. Can you define the word substantive for me and how this council is going to use the word substantive so that it can be used in a productive way to be helpful to developers who wish to do business in our city and not to be something that an individual councilmember could say, there's a foul here, we need to bring this up to the entire council?
It's it's hard to define substantive. I would say
And that's my concern.
I would say that in in this scenario, it's going to be up to city staff to decide whether or not an issue is substantive. If it if it is not, then then they're going to feel like they have the authority to address it. If it is, they're going to feel like it's beyond their authority. So, I mean, there there obviously could be any number of scenarios that may or may not, you know, be substantive to one person, but in the end, it's going to be staff that's going to be interpreting it and then deciding whether or not it's necessary to bring it to the council.
Right, but I've been around here long enough, sir, that when I've seen people who on this council get a little frisky, all of a sudden, a word that you and I might consider substantive and not very important, all of a sudden comes up to be a very, very important item. And I have real concerns about that kind of pressure being applied to to the staff by councilmembers with regards to a project like this and then putting a developer that is, and I've checked with both cities, I've checked with Fenton, Missouri, I've checked with Pontiac, Illinois, I have talked to the mayors of both of those cities, I have asked them, is Wally's a good community leader? Have they kept their promises? Have they done the things that you have asked them to do? And they have. And so why are we making a developer who has a good track record having an amendment like this in order to make them to do a difficult project? And the other question I have too, if I may, would it be appropriate for me to ask the developer to come forward and answer some questions that I have with regards to this amendment?
So in regards to your first question about defining substantive, I mean, I couldn't do that right now. If we wanted to define what substantive is, that would that, you know, there'd have to be a discussion about what that looks like in order to to add some more meat to that. So that's not it's not a definition I can give you right now in relation to this project. As it relates to the developer, if, you know, you all feel like you need more information in order to vote on this, if you want to request that and they want to oblige, that's up to you.
May I ask for a point of clarification?
Please.
Is it? Is it possible for Mr. Fears to strike that portion, item number 15, and just propose item number two as his amendment? If we can't come to a conclusion on the language?
Right, so if we do it, item number two would just be including but not limited to I-70 off and on ramps?
No.
Go ahead.
It's an old version.
Okay. Can I borrow your version, please? And so the new version would be including but not limited to South Nolan Road, Lynn Court Drive, and Canterbury Place. With regards to the question that you asked earlier, only items that we can control as a city council and not the items that MoDOT could control, is what I'm hearing you say. So if we were to strike the item number 15, I would be much more amenable to that, but I would like to ask the developer to come forward and to clarify some questions that I have with regards to the amendment. And and Mr. Rubenstein, if you could come forward and so if I may ask, when did you receive this amendment today?
We formally received it just minutes before the council meeting.
Okay, so when I handed you a copy of this, is the first time you've seen it?
Correct.
So in that question, did that give you enough time to be able to as a developer and a and a and as basically someone who's going to have a serious commitment of millions of dollars in our community, do you feel comfortable in in be able to answer those questions? Or if we if we limit the the amendment just to item number two, are you comfortable with just that amendment in striking item the item number 15 from the process?
I believe so. I'd like to bring my traffic engineer up.
Okay.
At the same time, you know, it seems like there was already change to the amendment from the one I received that
Okay.
made it somewhat smaller. I guess just to maybe add a little color from my perspective is, you know, we've started this project, you know, with conversations, almost a dozen, you know, whether in-person or virtual meetings with city staff, neighborhood meeting, planning commission, study session, first council meeting, and now our second. It is strange to receive requirements that are basically redundant and basically repeating what is already a requirement of us. You know, so with that color, that is my opinion on on what I received originally, because it seems like it's 98% of what's already been agreed to as part of a condition from the planning commission. So I will, you know, mention that is strange. I would say section 15 is very problematic. I think it allows for a lot of ambiguity on timing and appeals, and more so, I just don't think it's the spirit of the typical development process. I would like to bring our traffic engineer just to to get some confirmation. Could you just read one more time the amendment opposed to what the additions are from the planning commission? planning commission conditions?
Yeah, so on number two, the applicant shall construct all improvements to the street network provided for in the recommendations for the traffic impact study. And this is where the amendment makes the changes, and it's in red, including but not limited to South Nolan Road, Lynn Court Drive, and Canterbury Place, period. And that's the amendment changes, and the rest of it continues on in item number two. Were you able to follow along with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, no, I think actually, it's good. It specifies the roadways that are involved with the recommendations.
Right, and they're the ones that are involved with the city. Yep. And then, Mr. Rubenstein, if I could ask you this question, then going back to number 15, if we were to strike number 15 from this amendment, that would substantially, I probably shouldn't use substantive. But it would, would that make you much more comfortable with the process of making this amendment? To strike that item right there?
That would certainly help.
Okay. I will make a motion to strike number 15. Do I have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second? I'm sorry?
Do we not have to have, we have to vote on Mr. Fears' amendment, or do we ask him?
We can, within the amendment, we can still, we can vote within the amendment to further amend the amendment. It just gets confusing.
Right.
So we just need to be very careful and clear about what, what we're talking about, and what everyone is voting on.
Right. What my proposal is, is an amendment to the amendment, which item number 15 was proposed to the amendment, and my amendment to the amendment is to strike item number 15 from the amendment, and which would only allow now item number two to be passed forward, which would make it much more, in my opinion, much easier for the developer to meet the requirements of this process. So, but does anybody have any questions on that, behalf of to clarify that? Because I am the one who's drafting, or at least proposing, that amendment.
You need a second?
I think council member-
Council member Stewart, maybe a second.
Yep. But thank you for that clarification. Any further questions?
Just for clarifications, so we're moving to remove 15?
Right. Item number 15, which says, "Any substantive modifications to aforementioned conditions shall be only approved by the city council through an ordinance amendment." Unless I'm missing something else, and it doesn't look like I am. So I would strike under, item number 15 as it's mentioned on this proposed amendment. Any further discussion?
So, Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So I'd like to speak against the amendment to the amendment, just because it's not my intent, as I said before, it's not my intent to complicate things. I just feel like that if, and I understand that doesn't feel that way, but, but, you know, it just, with the scope of this development, and the, the, all the complexities of it, I would just ask that things come back to the council if there are any substantive changes. And I, I fully trust staff to determine what's substantive and what's not. And so, that's the purpose of, of this, of this amendment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Other further discussions on the amendment to the amendment, striking number 15 from the amendment? Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I, I'm a no on the amendment to the amendment, and I'm a no on the amendment. I, I just wanted to make it clear, I think it's redundant, and I think we've, the staff has set recommendations that have been agreed upon. So I'm a no. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, we've taken, we'll take a roll on the amendment to the amendment, which is striking number 15 from the item. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
No.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
No.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
No.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Amendment is accepted, four in favor, three opposed. So item number 15 is stricken from the amendment. With that, we go back to the main amendment. Any further discussion on the main amendment? Seeing no further-
Mayor, can you read what is now the amendment, just to make sure we're on the same page?
Right, the only thing that's on the amendment now, since item number 15 has been stricken, is number two. "The applicant shall construct all improvements to the street network provided for the recommendations of the traffic impact study, including but not limited to South Nolan Road, Lynn Court Drive, and Canterbury Place."
Thank you.
No, that's, I love clarification, so that way we're clear, and everybody's in the same hymnal, same page. So thank you for, for asking that. Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
No.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
No.
Councilmember Vought?
No.
Mayor Rowland?
I lost count. Where are we at? Three and three? What a conundrum. I got what I wanted in the amendments, and then here we go. I'm going to vote yes, because it does in fact do what we want it to do, so go from there. So, the amendment passes with the changes of just the modification on section two. All right, that being said, where are we at now? Okay, and we have a full public hearing?
Mayor, we still need to vote on the original item.
I need to vote on the original item, 25-087.
25-087, as amended.
As amended. Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, please proceed. Yep. Councilmember, please proceed.
All right. So I've been actively interested in the development of this area of the city since before coming on the council. I remember when the city took on the task of demolishing the Kmart building, and I was there to take a sledgehammer to the front of that structure with some of the rest of you. This is an important location, and it's important development for our city. I've watched carefully as Wally's came on the scene, and proposed this very significant development at what is arguably the front door to our city. I've been lobbied by people on both sides, for and against this project in recent months. I've traveled to a Wally's store to see what it looked like, and equally importantly, to talk to the employees, to see what kind of a company Wally's is. And I'm happy to report that the employees I talked to, from the man cleaning the restroom, to the retail manager, without exception, were positive about the place, the organization, and the people. I met for over an hour with traffic engineer to understand what changes were being proposed, and why she was convinced that those changes were adequate, so as to not cause extreme problems in that area of our city. And once again, thank you for spending that time with me. I'm happy to report that I came away from that meeting with a clear understanding of the changes, and why this is likely to improve the best, improve, improve the situation at the best of times, and at least maintain it at the busiest times, the traffic conditions in that area. So I feel good about all of this. I offered the amendment that we just took action on in an effort to clarify and make sure the conditions which this special use permit are granted are clear, and will be honored. I have no reason to think that they wouldn't be, but I just felt some clarity was warranted. Obviously, council disagreed, and that's okay. During this process, I attended the planning commission meeting where this was initially presented, and followed, following that, I asked a number of questions of Mr. Rubenstein, as well as others. There have been those in the community that thought my asking questions were unwarranted. I really don't understand that at all. As council members, in my opinion, we should always seek to find out as much as we can, much information as we can as possible, about the items that come before us. That's our job. I understand that sometimes the answer is, I don't know, or I don't know yet. And that was the case in this situation, when I asked about the incentives. It's a fair to, fair to answer my question and say, I don't know exactly what incentives we might, might ask for. And that's what Mr. Rubenstein did. Had, had I not asked that question, however, we may not have known for some time that incentives may be needed in this project. And we'll address those another day. But it's helpful to know that incentives may be needed to make this project happen. I appreciate the indulgence of the council in this, but I wanted to go on record how important I think this development is for the city. I appreciate my questions being answered to the extent possible at this time, and I'm pleased to be able to support this special use permit with the conditions that are being placed on the project, and knowing that any incentives will be addressed at some future point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Anyone else for the discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So, I just want to say, Wally's is a company that came in and purchased the property, which paid off the back taxes and reimbursed the city for the demolition of the former Kmart building. They did not wait for the property to be sold on the courthouse steps, as some other developers may have been waiting to do. I've been hearing over the last week about the incentives as well, and according to what Wally's has told me, they're not going to be asking for any city back incentives, and I, I believe what they're saying there. And then another thing that I've been hearing, some in the city are still thinking this is a truck stop, which is, it is not. So with all that said, I'll be happily voting yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So I just want to say that I am excited to support the ordinance for Wally's, because it will bring a unique place that people will want to stop and visit. Wally's will create new jobs for residents, it will boost revenue, and breathe life into a part of Nolan Road that needs it. With their investment in infrastructure, this project isn't just a business, it's an investment in our city. So I'm going to be happy to support it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
When we heard that Wally's was considering coming to town, so this has been almost two years ago, I went to visit their site in Illinois, and their site in Missouri, just so that I could get an idea of what it meant for them to come. I too was impressed with both their staffing, the attitude of the people who worked there, the absolute cleanliness of the site, and how well they maintained their property. The other thing that made me enthusiastic was that they embraced the culture of the town, so they had t-shirts from all of the local high schools, et cetera. And I think that they work hard to be part of community. We know that we're going to always have some, something that comes up in construction, because it always does. I appreciate the work that the team at the city will have to do to make sure that we attend to those changes as they come. I do hope that even though there isn't a requirement to bring an ordinance back, that the staff will of course report back any major changes, so that we are always appraised of that, so that we can communicate that well to our constituents, and we can be good partners as we move forward. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else have a further discussion? Please proceed.
Thank you. I also was able to visit the Wally's in Fenton, and it is, it's one thing to read about something and, and look at it on the website, but it's another to walk in the space and meet the employees, and also eat the food. And I, I agree that the employees seemed really happy, and, and seemed like they really loved their jobs. I want to read a quote from the city administrator of Fenton, Missouri, who was asked to provide feedback regarding their experience with Wally's. She said, "Wally's opened in the city of Fenton last year, and they have been a great corporate citizen from the beginning. Wally's has also been a wonderful addition to the city of Fenton, as well as the St. Louis metro area, and is a desired destination along the I-44 corridor, which is evidenced by the continuous number of patrons at the location. There have not been any adverse impacts from the, the development whatsoever, as I believe the selected location and site design anticipated the traffic needs. Too often, independence has had to watch our neighbors get the exciting new developments and projects. This time, we're on the ground floor. And I believe this project will bring energy, pride, and momentum to our city. This project will create good jobs, strengthen our retail base, and bring travelers from all over the country to see our city. I also believe Wally's can be a powerful, powerful partner, and help support our school district, nonprofits, and tourism. For these reasons, I'm voting yes."
Thank you. Anyone else have a further discussion? When I first heard Wally's was being offered, I was incredibly excited instantaneously. I have traveled to every state in the Union multiple times. I've been to Canada, Mexico, Europe, Guam. I've been all over the US, so I've been all over the world. And when I found out that we were going to get a Wally's, man, I was excited. That's a big deal for this city. It'll make exit 12 a destination. And I'm proud of that. You know what's going to make it? If they're going to tell people to go to the square, to visit our historic sites, to go to the Truman Home, to go to the Truman Library. They are going to bring traffic down Nolan Road that we have been wanting for decades. And they are going to be the partners that are going to make that happen. I too have talked to the mayors of Fenton, and the mayors of Pontiac, Illinois, and they have been delighted with them as a partner. And they have been full-throated in support of what Wally's has done for their cities, and what has done for their communities. My wife and I took a trip with my granddaughter. I will tell you, Wally's is granddaughter-approved. I asked her, I said, "What did you see on this trip?" And she said, "Wally's had the cleanest bathrooms of any that we stopped." And unfortunately, her grandfather's at the age where we had to stop often. It is not a truck stop. It is an opportunity for us to bring people from miles around. I've seen Buc-E's put signs up for as far as, well, 50 miles. I know you are going to put signs up and, up and down I-70, both directions. This is a great location for you, it's a great location for us, this is a great opportunity for our city, this is going to make exit 12 a destination, and that is something that we have been waiting for our entire lives. And this opportunity is the first small step in making that happen. And I am delighted and incredibly proud to vote yes for this project. And with that, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the motion carries seven in favor, zero opposed. Can I open up a public hearing? Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
A public hearing on a petition for the addition of property to the Nolan, Nolan Road Community Improvement District, full public hearing.
David Martin, Gilmore and Bell, serving as Economic Development Council to the city. As this was a late addition to the agenda, I believe the staff recommendation is to continue, excuse me? Is green light on?
Okay. Sorry, I can't hear you.
All right, sorry. Is that, does that help?
Yeah, it helps.
Okay. As this was a late addition to the agenda, I believe the staff recommendation is to continue the hearing to the regularly scheduled council meeting on October 20th?
Do you need any action on our behalf?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be happy to make that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion to postpone to October 20th. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to postpone to October 20th. Anyone have any discussion? Seeing no discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll to postpone this item to October 20th.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And this public hearing is postponed to October 20th, at a regularly scheduled meeting. This brings us to ordinances. Madam City Clerk, please proceed with 25-082.
25-082, second reading. An ordinance adopting the attached schedule of sanitary sewer rates with the first change scheduled for all bills dated November 1st, 2025, second reading.
Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Question for the city manager. When was the last time we had an update to the sanitary- When was the last time we had an update to the sanitary sewer rates?
Thanks for the question, Councilmember Stewart. The deputy city manager said she'd like to answer that.
Mr. City Manager, I want to clarify something as she proceeds forward. Is that true? Did you actually want to jump up and do this one?
Clearly.
Well said, well done.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Lisa Reynolds, Deputy City Manager. The last time the sewer rates were increased was July 1st of 20.
Okay. I don't know if revenue is the right term, but how much additional revenue are we expected to get from this increase, and what's that going to be used for?
I can have our consultant from Burns &amp; Mack talk specifics about the increase in revenue numbers, but specifically, it's used to fund basically all operations of the department. Operating supplies, gravel, concrete, restoration materials, pipeline, structures for manholes. Costs have risen exponentially for all of those materials, and then in addition to obviously rising labor costs and capital projects. So, the thing that we've been looking at and is consistent with any utility that is running up against a revenue issue is that you default to paring down your capital improvements program so you can keep normal operations up and running. The problem with slowing down a capital program is to, to an extreme, is that you wind up with what we did several years ago in a consent decree, or what we'd like to jokingly call forced compliance, and the government steps in and tells you what capital improvements you will make because you've postponed them. So, this is really an attempt just to keep that capital program going strong and maintain normal operations. But I will let Alex Craven talk to you about actual totals.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I believe the question was, what are the existing utility revenue streams, and then incrementally what revenues are to, are expected to be generated from the proposed increases? Unfortunately, I don't have the exact figures at my fingertips, but the existing utility revenue stream is somewhere to the tune of $30 million, and the proposed incremental revenue generated in the first year is roughly $3.1 to $3.3 million, and that's across all of the existing utility customers. Does that answer your question sufficiently?
It does, thank you. And that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Thank you. So, we put in this a inflationary capability so that what we don't do is lurch from time to time where people see big increases in their sewer rates. That allows it to come in metered over time. Is that what more municipalities are moving to so that they don't have rate shock for their ratepayers?
To answer your question specifically, do I see more and more of the customers and the clients that I work with move to that? I would, I would say it's really a mixed bag. The customers who have it like it because it doesn't bring rate discussions to the front of public discussion annually, and it allows for existing revenues under utility rates to maintain some level of increase with the rising cost to maintain the utility and reinvest in capital. So I'd say it's a, it's a mixed bag. The customers who have it really like it, and oftentimes the ones who don't have it are having rate discussions at a more frequent pace in the public domain.
Okay, and we put a cap on this so it can't rise faster than 3% so that if you have a high inflationary year, that the customers don't get clobbered with a huge rate increase?
Correct. Alex said I wanted to answer this question too. So yes, it is capped at 3%. Anything that would have to be needed in excess of that would come back to the council for approval. And then likewise, in years where the Consumer Price Index is flat, rates would stay flat, right? It's very tied to that national price index.
And should we, for some reason, accumulate more in our coffers than we needed? The council can always offer a rebate to the customers to be able to reduce that if we ended up with a large amount of excess capital, or we could pay down our debt so that we retire that debt early and reduce our expenditures for debt service. Is that fair?
Oh, absolutely. And so our debt is covered, and this is just another opportunity to talk about, there are often questions about the $12 regulatory compliance fee on the sanitary sewer bill. That is effectively the debt service that we're paying down for the consent decree work. So that was about $90 million in debt that was issued, and that work was completed in 2017. So, those are 30-year bonds that we'll pay. So we are happy to take every opportunity to pay those off early, and actually did refund the first issuance of those bonds to knock about four to five years off of that issuance.
So, just so I can recap, I sat on the PUAB, and we often would see you come in with the things that you needed to do, and sometimes if we couldn't afford to do those, that's where the Fed stepped in and forced us to do the things that we had to so we weren't putting contaminated sewage into the Missouri River. Yes, okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Deputy City Manager, septic tanks, does this affect any kind of rate increase or decrease within that?
So this would actually be technically a rate decrease from the way things are currently written in our ordinance. Private customers today that are physically able to connect to the sewer system but choose not to, still pay the full, both the full base rate and volume charge. Under this new revision, they would pay the base rate, but they would not pay the volume portion.
Thank you. Anyone else have further questions? Okay, seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 25-082.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
No. The item passes 25-082, passes six in favor, one opposed. That brings us to 25-083. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-083, second reading, an ordinance adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2024/2025 budget, which was approved by ordinance number 19561, second reading.
Any further questions on 25-083? Just for the sake of clarity, Mr. City Manager, if you could just give us a quick synopsis of this one for those that are watching.
Yeah, so, sorry, Mayor, my screen jumped on me, just please hold for a moment here. This is reconciling the budget for the previous fiscal year as we begin to close out each year. Some accounts have surplus funds, some have deficits. We allocate funds to ensure continuity across all of our accounts, departments, divisions, et cetera, to address any of those shortfalls or surpluses as they may be. So this allows then the Finance Department to move toward the annual comprehensive financial audit, but this is the necessary step to formally close the budget for the previous fiscal year.
Perfect, thank you very much. Any further discussion on 25-083? Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, 25-083, passes seven in favor, zero opposed, brings us to 25-084. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-084, second reading, an ordinance approving the petition to amend the five-year budget for the Nolan South Shopping Center Community Improvement District, making findings and authorizing other actions, and approving the First Amendment to the Cooperative Agreement among the City of Independence, Missouri, the Nolan South Shopping Center Community Improvement District, and the Nolan South Development Company, LLP, second reading.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on 25-084?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
So I'm going to be voting no on this. I do appreciate what the company has did so far regarding the landscaping in the parking lot. I just believe that fixing the roofs and the HVAC units is kind of just the cost of doing business, and I do not want to put that on the people that pay taxes there, so I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have further discussion on 25-084? Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
No.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
No. 25-084 has five in favor, two opposed, and it passes. It brings us to 25-088. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-088, this is formally listed as 25-086, second reading, an ordinance to adjust the City of Independence Power and Light Department customer charge to be effective for the monthly billing period beginning January 1, 2026, under which the charge, excuse me, will be increased by $5 for rate classifications MR1 and MR5, i.e. residential, and increased by $10 for rate classification MG1, MG2, MG3, MG4, and MG5, i.e. commercial industrial, second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on 25-088?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I'm going to make a motion to amend this. In this ordinance, it is, they want to increase the residential customer charge to $5. I'm going to make a motion to amend that, that we only raise it by $3.90 so it would go to $13.90 instead of the 15.
And that's, I want to make sure that cleared, hear that clearly, that is $13.90, 90 cents?
Yes, that is correct. It'll be $1 more than ever your current charges.
Okay, so $13.90 is your amendment? It'd be $3?
No, no, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Stewart, please proceed, but...
It's, it's, instead of the $5, it would be $3.90.
Okay.
So currently, it's at $10, so we'd raise it to $13.90 instead of 15. Is that clarified?
So is amendments going to take it to $13.90?
That is the result of the amendment. Instead of $15, it would be at $13.90.
Right.
But just reading the title alone, it's an increase of $5, is what it says, and what I believe Councilmember Stewart is proposing is an increase of $3.90 instead of $5.
Yes, that would be correct.
And that will take it to a total of $13.90, if we're correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Just make sure everybody's in the same handle, same page. Very good. Anyone else have further questions? Does anyone have a second to the amendment?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I just think percentage-wise that the $5 is too much, and we've already been told they're going to be doing another study, I believe, later on this year, early next year. So, I mean, if it comes back that we need more, we can look at it later, but that's what I believe it should be for now.
Okay, thank you. Any other further discussions on the amendment?
Mr. Mayor, may...
Please.
Mr. City Manager, can Mr. Hagen-Defry come up and speak for questions?
Yeah, he has to do that too.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, you are on a roll tonight. Well done. We just need the bump.
So, thank you. Two things, you and I had a discussion about why businesses didn't pay more than the $10 increase when, you know, some of them are quite large, like Unilever, et cetera, and the point you made was the majority of the businesses in Independence are small businesses, and so large increases for them would be burdensome. Did I reflect that correctly?
Absolutely correct.
Okay. Can you tell me what the change for 53,000 customers, reducing it from $5 to $3.90, what sorts of changes is that going to make for you for the work that you would have to do? What do you think the impact would be?
Well, it just reduces the amount of revenues, as you guys talked earlier with the sewer rates, by, I'd say, quick math was roughly around a half a million dollars plus for me to be able to continue to do capital improvements and pay wages and do all the things of running the utility. We've, we've had so many studies in the past, and I've talked endlessly about this, that the customer rate really needs to be at around $25 if you look at our customer mix, because we have so many residential, right? We're 90% residential, and the cost to, of service to service one customer residential that doesn't get that much energy usage is higher, and that's why we're very similar to like BPU. And when I put in the rates comparisons, BPU's customer charge is around, I think, $26 to $28, right? So we've had several studies over the past few years. It went from $19 to $21 to around $25 was the last study. So instead of hitting a $15 change, I thought, hey, let's, we need to do an incremental increase and get us to where we need with these customer service charges. These cover the back end of rolling trucks, to maintaining transformers, to paying personnel, and is aside from your actual energy usage, which we buy from the Southwest Power Pool. So that's the distinction of why everybody should pay the same for a customer charge because your transformer out back, and for me to roll a truck and maintain all the infrastructure is the same for every customer. So that's, that was where we came up, we got to the $5, was just an incremental change. So yeah, reducing that down to $13.90 instead of the 15 drops about a half a million dollars off of my availability to continue to do projects and bring the, and bring this utility up to a modern utility, which is what I've been challenged to do as the director.
So just for my own summation, on one side, I control how much energy I use, I get to determine that based on how efficient my utilities are, et cetera. You're trying to support the infrastructure that makes electricity available to my house, regardless of whether I turn my lights on or not, because that has to be available as soon as I switch my light on. So, this is the distribution or the mechanism to get it from the power lines into my house. This is what that fee is supporting. Is that fair?
Yes, we call that fixed, fixed O&M or fixed operating and maintenance costs.
Okay.
So yes, depending upon whether you don't use any electricity or, or you're a big user in the residential world, I have to serve, supply the same amount of personnel, equipment, and everything to supply that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
So I'll be voting against this amendment, reason being, number one, the PUAB addressed this as a, as a committee to, and voted in favor of the $5 increase. And number two, you know, this kind of what I would consider arbitrary change is exactly why we need to make changes to our charter to allow for the, the, a different kind of board to run our power and light utility. So I'll be voting for, against this for those two reasons.
Thank you. Anyone else? Other discussions on the amendment? Seeing no further discussion on the amendment, and Mr. Kovar, I may call upon your expertise to clarify the amendment as you understand it.
The amendment, as I understand by Councilmember Stewart, is to change the $5 rate increase to $3.90, which will result in $13.90 instead of $15. So it's a decrease of $1.10.
Thank you very much. Well said. Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment.
Councilmember Fears?
No.
Councilmember Perkins?
No.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
No.
Councilmember Wiley?
No.
Councilmember Vaught?
No.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and the amendment fails, five opposed, two in favor. That brings us to the main portion of 25-088. Any further discussion on 25-088?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Both the increases tonight have been hard decisions, but the fact that the PUAB recommended these increases carries weight. There are a group of citizens who took the time to carefully consider the options and make her deeply, both about our community and the success of our utilities. When these kind of things come up, I think a lot about my own family growing up and how rate increases would have been difficult, and that perspective is always with me when I make these decisions. In the end, I want to respect the feedback I heard from constituents after the DKMT study was released. Our community wants to invest in IPL and take care of this critical... wants to invest in IPL and take care of this critical asset. My goal is to ensure that we have funds to maintain what we have in a responsible and sustainable way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have other discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-five zero eight eight.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and twenty-five zero eight eight passes. Seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero eight nine, first reading, an ordinance amending Article six of Chapter eight and Article four of Chapter twenty of the Independence City Code pertaining to the adoption of a revised procurement policy. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero nine zero, first reading, an ordinance exempting the City of Independence from temporary extended hours for selling, serving, and allowing consumption of intoxicating liquor within the City of Independence during the 2026 FIFA World Cup. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero nine one, first reading, an ordinance finding, determining, and declaring the necessity of acquiring temporary construction easements for the Fairmount Loop Project, project number one-one-two-five-zero-one, authorizing the negotiation and eminent domain proceedings if necessary, approving the plans and specifications for the project, authorizing the use of experts as needed, authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in conjunction with the project. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero nine two, first reading, an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter fourteen of the Independence City Code pertaining to Community Gardens. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero nine three, first reading, an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter fourteen of the Independence City Code to allow electronic message signs in the Arts District. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero nine four, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a grant for two thousand five hundred dollars from the Missouri Department of Conservation, MDC, to remove invasive honeysickle at George Owens Nature Park. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero nine five, first reading, an ordinance adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget, which was approved by ordinance one-nine-five-six-one. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero nine six, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of an agreement with the City of Sugar Creek, Missouri, for Independence Police to provide dispatching services for an annual fee and allocating that fee to a special revenue account to support related communications expenses, appropriating the necessary funds, and authorizing future change orders and appropriations for the same project. First reading.
Thank you very much, and this brings us to Councilmember Comments. Councilmember Stewart, the floor is yours.
Um, the only thing I have tonight, Mayor, is, uh, tonight is the city manager's last meeting, so I just want to wish him well, and it's time in Bloomington. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fears, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, well, we've had a extra week since our last meeting, and it has been a busy time. The Audit and Finance Committee met recently and reviewed our year-end financial statements, as well as had an interesting review of the cost of the city's involvement in, and investment in Santa Calagon by the city management analyst. And so if that's of any interest, I encourage you to take a look at that report. Last week, the city department, or the police department, had their National Night Out, which, event which where lots of our citizens were able to see the great tools and resources IPD has, and even meet our new interim police chief, and we're looking forward to getting to know him better and having him help us through this time of transition. Probably most importantly, we've been going through thirteen responses to RFPs of search firms wanting to help us find our next city manager. This is a, this is a challenging task, but we're well along the way, which brings me to my final comment. Today is the last day we will see City Manager Zach Walker sitting at that table at our council meetings. And Zach, I just want to say, it's been a real pleasure to work with you. I thank you on behalf of the citizens of Independence for the knowledge, professionalism, and expertise you've brought to our city. Thank you for bringing your children with you tonight, so that we can thank them for sharing you with us. And I truly believe we are a better city now than we were when you came into this role, and I wish you nothing but the very best as you go on to new endeavors.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Vaught?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I am happy to share now that Sonic at Thirty-Fifth and Nolan has finally opened. So I encourage you to go visit and show them your support as they open their doors again. And then I just want to express my gratitude to our city manager Zach Walker. When I first joined the council, I faced a steep learning curve, but Mr. Walker was incredibly supportive from day one. He's always quick to respond to my questions, my many questions, and made himself available if I needed guidance or clarification on some theme. Mr. Walker is not only a valuable asset, but also a pleasure to work with. Zach, I appreciate everything that you've done for me and for our community, and I want to thank you for your many years of dedication and service to Independence, and I wish you all the best in your new position.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Wiley?
Thank you, Mayor. This week, I had the opportunity to tour the new Disc Golf Course at Pioneer Ridge Middle School. Thanks to a great partnership between the City of Independence, the Independent School District, and the Metro Disc Golf Community, we now have a full eighteen-hole course open to the public on ISD property. The course winds through the woods behind the school, and it's gonna be a really great asset for both our students and our community. Special thanks to Jordan Hink, a parent in the district who designed the course and worked really hard to raise funds for tree clearing and course development. This course will give our students PE and STEM opportunities, and it also has the potential to host large, well-attended tournaments that bring people to our city. I was gonna mention IPD National Night Out, which was really fun. The weather was perfect. Thanks to everyone who made that happen. Finally, I want to recognize Zach Walker, who was attending his last council meeting tonight. Zach, thank you for your service to Independence and everything you've done to help me settle in to this role over the last year and a half. I'm truly gonna miss our early Tuesday morning meetings. Best wishes as you take on your next chapter in the frozen tundra. Sorry, you will be missed here.
Councilmember McCandless?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, let me welcome Wally's to town. We're delighted to have you. Second, and certainly not in that order, we want to welcome interim Chief Brinkley. We're delighted that you have come north from your Texas roots to come join us in Mr. Truman's hometown. We know that we will make sure to welcome you appropriately at other opportunities, and we appreciate that you're willing to bring your time and talent to help our police department and the city. So thank you. Two items for city manager to dump on someone else. The first one is, we broadcast our meetings on City Seven. City Seven is only available on Comcast, so if you have other streaming services, or if you don't have access to cable through Comcast, you can't get City Seven. As Google is expanding, as AT&amp;T is expanding, the share of Comcast subscribers is falling, and also just the utilization of City Seven is falling. We have some substantial investments that we have to make in our IT for us to continue to do that. We already have a YouTube channel where people can livestream or watch it on delay, so I am going to ask that our staff bring some recommendations back to the council, because we're gonna need to make those decisions from a budgetary and communication standpoint. I want to be able to start letting people know right away, find a way for some of our senior members to get some support, so they can learn how to do it on YouTube if they need to. So that's my challenge back to the staff.
Well said, and we'll work on that.
Okay, thank you. The second one, there's enormous changes at the CDC at the federal level, and it is, in this climate, it is very, very likely that we will see a reduction in funds that come to the City of Independence for our Health Department and for those services. We have a, um, interesting mix in that we have a large Kansas City Health Department, a large Jackson County Health Department, and a small Independence Health Department. Technically, we are considered part of the eastern Jackson County region, so the Jackson County Health Department, there's probably some overlap there. I do know that we are seeking some additional funds for emergency preparedness, which is part of the Health Department. I do know that the state of Missouri has been encouraging regionalization, so shared services among regions that are geographically connected. I have some concerns about the sustainability of our Health Department for the reasons that I'm mentioning, is that I think we're gonna see some big, big changes in the grants that we can use to sustain those staff members. We need to maintain vaccine access for our kids in school, infection surveillance for communicable diseases, and disease prevention and health promotion activities. Those things I am deeply committed to as a public health professional. I want us to have the very best services, so I am going to come back to you for some plans, because we don't just want to lose the funds and then lose that functionality. We need to be thinking about what that looks like for the long term.
Again, well said, and I know staff's taking that very seriously, and we'll continue to work with the body on formulating the best path forward.
Okay, thank you. I was delighted to attend a regional planning session on regional transit. You know that every municipality is struggling deeply with how to sustain their bus system, and it has real impact for people who need to get to work, need to get their groceries, need to get to Wally's, uh, need to get to the hospital. And right now, we don't have any east-west transit in a fixed route. We're using the IRES system, which is microtransit, so point-to-point, but not as frequent, not as, um, doesn't have as broad a scope as the, as an integrated bus system would. The good news is that everybody's desperate and is really coming to think about, what could this look like as a countywide approach instead of each city doing it a little bit at a time? I just want you to know that I'm still participating in those conversations. I hope I'll be able to bring you something hopeful in the future. I was delighted to be at the CSO ribbon-cutting for a brand-new house just across the street from City Hall. They have been investing in helping homeowners, so people who are paying so much in rent who can actually own a home, build their own wealth in a family, and actually pay less than they're paying in rent. So just appreciate CSO's creativity in making that happen. And my last thing is, of course, saying goodbye to Zach. We will miss your availability to council at weekends, evenings, early mornings, your compendium of knowledge, your sense of humor and levity, which made this a lot of fun, and just being a good guide to that interesting intersection between the elected and the staff. And we are not to cross that chasm. We are not to tell staff what to do, because that is not our job. And you acted as the liaison between the two and the translator, and we appreciate that very much. You provide a good leadership to your staff. We have grown under your tutelage. We are in a better financial position than we had been, so we owe you a great debt of gratitude. We also adore Brett and Caroline and are so glad that you guys came to be here to witness your dad. I think you should be sure that he takes you out for ice cream after this, and if there's anything else you want, just slip me a note, and we'll see if we can analyze that at the end of the meeting. So Zach, we really appreciate you. Best of luck in Bloomington.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you, Mayor. It has been a, a little bit since we've been here, and since that time, I had the good pleasure on Saturday, September twentieth, to help celebrate with Inglewood Church. They've been around for eighty years, since nineteen forty-five. They've been here a beacon of hope and spreading God's love since that time, so that was exciting to do that. Mr. City Manager, Zach, it's been an interesting ride with you. It's been really fun. When I was first elected and met you, you were the assistant city manager. The city was on a little wobbly ground. Several planning commission members had resigned. The city manager had been fired. There was a gaping hole in, in our city finances. We had John Pinch, who did an excellent job as our interim city manager. So there was a lot of changes, a lot of wobbliness. We did a national search for the next city manager, and it came down to you and a gentleman from Texas. And I can sit here and say, we did pick the right, right person. So thank you. I've had the opportunity to watch your development as a city manager. I'm proud of you. We haven't always agreed with decisions made, but at the end of the day, I knew that you had the best will and the best intentions for the City of Independence. When I came, became first district councilman in 2016, my goal was, and still is, to bring revitalization, capital improvements to the city, and specifically to District One. The success that I have enjoyed, and the Independence has enjoyed, is because of you. Your leadership, to be able to think out of the box, to use tools that have been in our drawer for years that we've never pulled out, to get things done. The Renaissance of Inglewood, the downtown redevelopment plan, this has helped guide much of Independence in the direction for Western Independence since 2018. We've engaged with Copin and Brooks as a master developer for our downtown. This will help move our downtown into a more dynamic economic driver for Independence. Twenty-four Highway Development is one of, one of the largest cost-share capital improvement projects Western Independence has done in fifty years. Also with that, Old Town Fairmont will get a makeover in 2027. You have helped bring one billion dollars of greenfield development into Eastern Independence, something that, when I was on the city council from ninety-six to two thousand and four, was always a dream. You helped bring that to reality. Really, a good measure of success is when people who have complained throughout the city of why is the first district getting all the projects. Far as I'm concerned, your work is done here with that. In, in your interview, you gave the council at the time a challenge coin. That challenge coin says, "Not only, not less, greater." This is the challenge that I have tried to keep all these years, and Mr. Walker, you have kept that challenge. Zach, I have appreciated your leadership, your friendship, and I wish you the best of luck there in Minnesota. Thank you for all, everything you've done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And are you gonna keep the challenge coin, or are you gonna share it with him?
Oh, no, this is mine.
Oh, that's yours, okay.
This is mine.
He was holding it and rubbing it, so I was just, I just wanted to make sure if that was coming your way, Zach, you're gonna get it, so. But, Councilman Revad, I want to also share your concerns with Sonic being open, and I was there the other day, and I got a Route forty-four, or I guess you should call it a Route forty-four diet cherry limeade, and it was spectacular, and I encourage everyone to go there and do that. And so it was spectacular. Mr. City Manager, great work. Thank you very much for all you've done, and for all the years that you've worked here at the city. We cannot say thank you enough. And I wish you well in Bloomington. And matter of fact, I like Bloomington so much that I took my family there for vacation to see the Mall of America. Oh, it's been probably thirty years ago now. My oldest was probably ten years old, and we all went to Bloomington, Minnesota, and so I'm looking forward to going back and visiting you there and seeing Bloomington, Minnesota again. Hopefully, I will not go when it's cold, but it can get cold there. I just gotta warn you, it can get cold there. But they also have big snowplows, as you well know, and you'll get those moved all around the city. So with that, I just want to say thank you for all of your work and, and all that you've done, and enjoy the Mall of America, because that's one of the greatest places to shop in America. So you, you've got, you've made a, a substantial step up, trust me. And one thing you've got to work out is, how do you get tax money there? That's the thing you've got to work out. So that's, that's the, I don't know how the council will, will go on that, but that'll be the, the one. Also, just one last note, and then Mr. City Manager will give you the floor. But the chief score is fourteen to seven, and we're almost to halftime, and chiefs are ahead fourteen to seven, and they have the ball, and they are driving, but I don't know how far they are. And, but with that, Mr. City Manager, the floor is yours for your final time here at Independence. So please proceed.
Okay, I'll be the halftime show. Thank you for, for all of those comments.
Thank you for all of those comments. After six hundred and forty-nine meetings, including four hundred and thirty-three as city manager, my favorite reality television show, live from the Independent City Council, has reached the end of its run. Well, at least for me, and what a ride it's been. The best way I know how to look back on thirteen years is by the numbers, because numbers don't lie. Over the years, I've had the privilege of serving alongside twenty-five elected officials here in Independence. Each brought a different perspective, challenged me in unique ways, and taught me something valuable about leadership and public service. Thank you for your dedication to this community. I've also had the honor of working with fifty-five interim or full-time department directors, deputy and assistant city managers, who together represent hundreds of years of public service. Their professionalism, integrity, and passion have made Independence stronger, and I know they'll continue to do so for years to come. I challenged each of you to leave the city better than you found it, and you've answered that call. Thank you for being my teammate in the trenches all these years. Together, we strengthened the city's financial foundation. We've added or retained eight voter-approved revenue streams that provide nearly $41 million in this year's budget alone to fund core services. We've raised reserves from fifteen, from five to seventeen percent in our general fund, exceeding our minimum policy for the first time. We've closed outdated TIV projects to return money to our schools and libraries, and reduced overall debt, so more dollars go toward the services our residents rely on every day. There have been a series of historic firsts. The city's first general obligation bond to repair our roads, bridges, and sidewalks. The first charter review in forty years, ensuring future generations won't wait that long again. The first comprehensive plan update in twenty-five years, the first tourism master plan ever, and the creation of the first convention and visitors bureau in our city's history. We fostered a climate for economic growth and redevelopment, resulting in over $1.2 billion in permitted commercial and residential activity, and bringing thousands of new jobs and countless new amenities to our city. And we've made major investments in the facilities that serve our residents and employees. The new municipal commons will bring nearly all departments under one roof, improving public access and collaboration across the organization. The new police headquarters will provide a modern, professional environment that helps us recruit and retain top-tier workforce dedicated to keeping this community safe. And soon, the first of eleven fire station projects will start to take shape here in our city. Along the way, we've worked to ensure that the needs of our most vulnerable residents were never forgotten. Programs like our Police Mental Health Co-Responder Initiative, ARCH, and Independence Together reflect that commitment, meeting people where they are, connecting them to care, and strengthening the fabric of our community. None of this would have been possible without the thousands of public servants who dedicate their careers to this city, or the countless residents who volunteer on boards, commissions, and neighborhood associations, who show up, speak up, and stay engaged. You are the heartbeat of Independence. And to the many community members who've sent a text, a card, or a call with words of encouragement over the years, your kindness and support have meant more than you'll ever know. All right, we're going to try to pull this off here. That brings me to my final number, five, my family. Dang it. To my parents, who taught me the value of public service and introduced me to my faith and to scouting. Two foundational entities where I first learned of my duty to help others. It leaves things better, but I found them. Man, I might have to get the counselor to read this. To my wife Lauren, thank you for being my constant, for your encouragement, inspiration, and yes, your tough love when I needed it most. You've seen me after the long days and nights, and you've loved me through every one of And to my kids, who are enduring one more Independence meeting tonight. I know this job has meant missed moments and memories because of the meetings, phone calls, and travel, but like every parent, I want to make the world better for my kids, and I've had the rare privilege of getting to do that as part of my work. I hope in some way that what we've done here leaves things a little better for you. The road was not always easy. Just ask Facebook. But when I look back, what I'll remember most are the best moments, when this community came together, rose to challenges, and showed its very best. That's the Independence I'll carry with me. Thank you for giving me the opportunity of a lifetime. Hail and farewell. Thanks, Mayor.
And anyone else want to, I don't want to follow that up, but well said, Mr. City Manager, wish you the best. And with that, we will now call this meeting adjourned. Thank you. Yes. I do. Thank you for asking for that. No, I'm glad you did that. I'm trying to, this is for the iStar Award winner. Can you do an inter-office meal for me? It goes to Jody. Actually, I don't know.